You're centered right there, just so you know. Hooray!
Hi, Amanda, can you hear us?
Okay, so. I'd like to call for order, the Oakland Borough Council Regular Meeting for April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mr. Brinkley.
Here.
Ms. Holes.
Here.
Ms. Leonardi.
Here.
Ms. Pagnotta.
Here.
And Borough Council Vice President, Ryan.
Here.
I would like to first, we have one registered speaker this evening, which is Randy Baum, our Borough Treasurer, and he's going to give us our first quarter report.
Okay, good evening. Hopefully, everybody has a report in their packets, and there might be a supplemental page that was handed out for the meeting, or maybe Scott can bring it up on the screen and chat about it. Okay, so the first page of the report is the cash balances and all the different funds for the borough. I'm going to go through what the changes have been through the course of the first quarter, but generally, the borough is on very, very sound footing right now, and the financials are quite healthy. One thing to note is all the transfers from the general fund to the other funds will occur in May when the lion's share of the property taxes are received. So that's usually when most of the property taxes come into the borough. So I'll go through each fund quickly. I'm not going to read the whole report, just point out some of the highlights. So the revenue from the general fund is essentially on budget. We're, you know, we're twenty-five percent through the year now, so that's sort of the benchmark I use. We don't budget on a monthly basis, so just give you a sense of, from a level of effort standpoint, where we are. So the revenue is pretty much coming in on track. We did receive a grant for the body cameras, for the police body cameras. That was received for twenty-four thousand. Expenditures are pretty much on track. Tax collection, fire, code enforcement, planning, planning and zoning, parks and playgrounds, admin finance, lead ownership area, government building and police, all within five percent of what you'd expect them to be, plus or minus at the end of the quarter. And that's the benchmark I would use, is you can have some slight fluctuation. Technology Public Works and Shade Tree are a little greater than five percent. We did some server and firewall work here. There was some early spending on leaf recycling, and we bought the road salt that we need probably for years to come, given the miles, whether they had. And there was also an engine repair. And the shade trees are just some work being done earlier in the year that was planned for later. And as I said, the transfers will occur later in May. The Boulevard project, they received their grant for the LED project, because remember the LED project was funded a little bit by the Boulevard project and by the, by the bond that was issued. We're going to talk about it later. They have received twenty-three point seven in donations. They were planned for the year, which is a good start for them, so that's about what you'd expect them to be. The Kerr Museum Fund is really only used for facility only. Everything else is being handled by the current Thomas Kerr Foundation, so there's been some minor repair costs and janitorial services at the end of March. The library received a large portion of their RAG funding early in the year. There's also a grant that's expected later for one hundred seventy-nine thousand for HVAC controls. That'll be coming in later. We can, you know, the library is one of those funds that has some working capital, so we have the ability to move working capital from the general fund in advance of May, if need be. We'll just monitor that closely as we go through the next couple of months. And expenditures are on track. There were some expenditures planned later in the year for the HVAC project and the carpet replacement that's planned in the library. Sewer fund revenues, about twenty-two point four percent of the whole year budget, so pretty much on track, and expenditures are online, they're on track as well. There have been some payments to the engineering company for the Plum Creek Interceptor repairs, and, and don't forget, the large debt service payments will come later in the year. There'll be an interest payment, and then the principal will come later in November. Capital Parks revenue is really just from gas royalties. There's some pretty large grants planned later. They keep rolling forward, the CFA two, the Plum Creek Trail Phase Two, and then the rescoping of Chateau Beach when that occurs. Those are expected later in the year, both the revenue and the expenditure as we go through. Hundred ninety-six thousand dollars was received from liquid fuels from the state. That, as you know, gets paid directly to the paving contractor during the paving project this year. That was a little bit above the budget, about seventy-six hundred of what was planned in the budget, so. And that will be added to what Capital Roads does for paving. So the funding for Capital Roads will occur in May, and this is for both paving projects as well as stormwater and flood control. There have been some fairly large expenses this year, year-to-date, because of the sinkhole repairs at Allegheny with the Boulevard and Washington, as well as on Seventh Street. So, so there has been some activity there. Capital Reserve, there's nothing planned this year. There's nothing that happened in this first quarter, other than some interest on the CDs. And the American Rescue Plan Fund, there's not much happening yet this year, but there's a plan for all the stormwater projects that have to be, have to occur as we go forward. So the bond update, I thought it was important that, you know, council at least have a picture of where the bond is. So we worked with the finance committee that we have, with the budget liaison and the borough manager, assistant manager and the accountant, and we came up with a table, just to give you an update on where we stand with the bond. Hopefully, okay, it's up on the screen there. A little hard to see, but does everybody have, hopefully people have a copy or? Well, we can blow it up, so if you can see that. So let me just explain what this is, and we'll do this every quarter until all the funds are utilized, because that's the only time you're going to need to, but we're already paying debt service on this, so I thought it was important. So the top part of this, above the gray line, is the, is the Series B bond. So if you recall, the original face value was two and a half million dollars, and so you can see the usage show in parentheses. So what was originally planned was, you know, refinancing the old bonds, the fire truck, the LED conversion process, the, the, the truck, and, and then there was some contingency built in. So that's in the left-hand column for origin. So you can see then the forecast of what, what's going to be planned through the rest of the year. And the only difference between the two columns is the Boulevard railings down along the Boulevard for the steps and along the top to protect people. That's one hundred fifty thousand was added. So you can see that there's only about a hundred fifteen thousand left in the bond that hasn't been allocated to a specific project, and as far as what's projected. And then you can see what's actually happened so far. Obviously, we refinanced the first, the library bond and the, the general fund bond, and then the fire truck's been completed, the LED conversion, we've spent about a hundred fifty-six thousand, and we've done the truck, which is about eighty-six thousand. So we still have some more disbursements to make related to that bond, but, but it's accounted for and it's all planned accordingly. Okay? So if you move down, Scott, the, the sewer bond's in a little different situation. If you recall, the original face value was sixteen million dollars, and the left-hand column shows what was originally used when we justified the bond back in the November, December, twenty-twenty-one timeframe. So you can see all the different projects that were planned. And so after a year and plus of engineering work by Hatch and others, you can see now the forecast for the various projects where they stand. We haven't allocated anything yet, we haven't dispersed anything yet from that bond, and it'll be another year before the engineering is completely done, before we start to actually put projects or, you know, supply chain contracts in place, and we actually start spending that money. So, but I just wanted to give you an update of where the current forecast is. The, the one line in here, engineering is included above. At some point, that'll be broken out, and it'll be by itself, and then the other lines will be reduced accordingly. Because I think it's important to track what the engineering cost is going to be on this project overall. You can also see at the bottom of each of the two tables, there are some earnings, you know, we have. This money is with Huntington, we've already, you know, received the bond, so the money is with Huntington, and we are earning a certain amount of interest on that. We are limited in what we can earn for municipal bond, because these are tax-free municipal bonds, so therefore, we can only earn what the original rate was, it was projected at the time. Otherwise, we have to pay that back to the IRS. So, so our bond sort of custodian is managing that for us, and so we, we don't expect to exceed that, but there is some interest in there that can be used for contingency and other things as we go forward with these projects, particularly the sewer project, as it becomes a new organization, given it'll be a couple of years from the time the bond was issued to when, when we actually start dispersing funds.
I don't think we would disperse some of this money this year.
Some.
In a Plum Creek pump station. Should come in this year, and some of the hatch engineering.
Yeah, engineering for sure will be paid this year. Well, in fact, I think it's, some things on the agenda later related to that. So, yeah, some of the engineering will come, but the lion's share of the bond will, will likely be spent mostly after the design is fully done, which I think is expected in twenty twenty-three.
Hopefully Plum Creek.
Yeah, some of it.
Even be finished.
Right. Yeah, I think it behooves us to get it, to utilize the funds as quickly as possible.
Yes.
So.
Randy, I can't see the specific number here of the earnings. Is that for, what, just the third quarter?
No, that's from the inception of the bond in twenty-twenty-two till today. So that's two hundred and twenty thousand from January first, twenty-twenty-two, up until the end of the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three.
Is there any sense, based on the amount of money that's involved with this, what our limit is for earnings over the life of this?
It, it's a percentage. It's not, it's, I don't know the dollar amount, it's a percentage of that. So I forget what Joe told us when he was here, it's got to be the same. Yeah, it's got to be in the same percentage that we're paying out in terms of what we're giving. That's the triage amount. If we earn more than that, so if we took this money and put it in a CD with the rates being high, we would end up having to pay back some of that to the IRS, because these are tax-free.
That's totally our choice.
Our choice, right, exactly.
They calculated rules as the number come down, rules based on your passion, you know.
But I mean, hypothetically, the number was, what, two and a half, two, three quarters? Two, two and a half, sorry. So I mean, that's the cap on what we're allowed.
We're allowed to earn that we would have available for other contingency type things.
Anybody else have anything? Everybody, we, Randy will be, and Brian will be doing this quarterly, if there's a change quarterly, and otherwise, like every, every other meeting. Everybody can just keep up with it and see where we stand.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and your address and.
Park District, thirty-nine Moore Street, Fonge. Okay, but I'm just here for the last meeting. I asked you guys if you could find out some information only about Brent Tech Chemical Company down there. It's not even on the stand-up. So did you find out anything on it?
Fire marshal for the borough has reached out to Brent Tag.
I can't hear you.
The fire marshal for the borough, who belongs to the fire department, is reaching out to Brent Tag to get an update from them. On an annual basis, Brent Tag sends them a list of things that are in the building.
I'm sorry, you can, you can, you want to say, I wish you could hear. This, this is the big concern. I have four allergies, my daughter's fifteen years old. We have one of three people, they had been for cancer down there, and I feel this. I was here before them, before I, you know, when they, he's saying.
The fire marshal is reaching out to Brent Tag because they do give them annual reports on the chemicalization building. Hasn't happened yet for this year. When I have information, I'll get right to you.
Okay, another thing, what is this red flag sign down here? I lived down here for almost fifty years, there was never a big red flag sign down here. What is this?
The windsock, you mean?
Again.
I'm, I am surmising, but this is complete. I'm a complete, as I've seen windsock there before. It's just sort of in which way, the direction of air is flowing, in case something does happen.
This is a big concern, I mean, every. Another trail, turning the direction. In a chemical plant, it was plastic. I, you know, I just want to know, it's a health center. I don't want something to happen and everybody move and evacuate, you know.
You guys probably know more about this than I do, but a number of years ago, the fire department did a number of things to be sure that they could access that building. Do you, or might you, you're.
That is true, and also, this, this, so you know, a burger too. That is actually inspected by Homeland Security as well, for safety measures and everything else. We do that for, right?
In the last two years, why are all these same two paper trucks coming in there from Dana, D A and A?
I, I don't know what they, why they got tanks in there to increase their thing, but yes, they are, they're a chemical tank.
Yes, but I didn't call up the vote yet. So, but.
So you.
Yeah, with that, that's a concern. I mean, we have been on the news and other trades have derailed, uh, in places. Sure.
We talked to the paint company when I was a kid, you know. I tried to find out, my daughter went in, you look at the sun on the wall, and pick up the phone and. You get somebody and you ask a question, and they don't give you any answers, you're supposed to give.
Well, the borough's going to have reports, and they're going to be three times a year. I mean, it is getting watched, and it's, it's normal to worry, but it is, it's, we, we're real aware of that thing.
Yeah. And I, I didn't react to it.
Well, I'll spend another twenty-two. Are there any other comments from the public this evening?
Yeah, we do hold an hour.
Yeah.
No, I didn't.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Lake Hammer, I'm at one-twenty, Fourth Street. Now, I've visited the meeting, council meeting before, I'm sorry, I don't know the date, but it's, I'm concerned about a particular property, two-thirty-five Allegheny Avenue. And my complaint that time was, it's an eyesore. But now he's dug up the sidewalk in front of the, of, of business, and it's interfering with public access, just walking down Allegheny Avenue. And this guy's always tearing something up, he's got Kelsey Gruball boarded up now. So I don't know, if you can't give him a little push or something, especially on two-thirty-five, boy, that's bad there. He had equipment there, he had an excavator there, and all of a sudden, it's gone. So I don't know if he had a fight with his contractor, I don't know what's going on, but it's a bit of a noose.
See, our CEA has overseen this project specifically, the old, the prior code officer. They have, I think, worked on the property for about two weeks, according to their own records, they, the CEA. I know we, we required them to secure the property, because it is on a truck, and so they did put a perimeter fence around the property.
And the sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Sidewalks include, because it's.
Oh, the sidewalk is inside?
Yes, inside the fence, yeah, the sidewalk is gone.
Okay, so you have to go and.
Yeah, go into the street to walk by.
They're ultimately replacing, replacing along the sidewalk too.
Okay.
As part of the tear off.
I was concerned, because I saw the equipment gone, so I thought it'd be another long-term project in there.
Not really sure, but again, C, when CEA last gave me the, they, they, they recognized it had been worked for about two weeks on the exterior.
Yeah.
Other than that.
That's a company that we hire.
Oh, okay.
To follow inspections and that, follow construction like that. So it's, it's just the name of the company that issued the plan against a couple of years ago when he was ready to do this. That's why he meant, we have two, two groups right at the moment, and CEA is working.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Does anyone else care to comment this evening?
I, I'd like to address council, private citizen.
Okay.
I've been asked to do this by the. Homeowners Association. Have a friendly approach. No.
Yeah.
Uh, this is sort of unintended consequence of off-leash dogs in our collarwood. I'm sorry. It's a sort of, the laws, as I said, under the unintended consequences. What's happened is there have been a number of complaints from homeowners to the association concerning off-leash dogs and their products on private property in the commons area. Now, there are two borough ordinances concerning dogs. One concerns that they have to be on leashes, except specific time and specific areas in our house. And the other is that you have to pick up after the dog. And both of those are being violated, probably by just a few people who either want to violate the, the laws or they just aren't aware of it. So at this time, OSHA is not asking for any specific enforcement or changes to the rules in our collarwood. We're simply asking for some additional signage to be placed per the map on this attached, on this form that I gave you, with the sign on the third page. There's something like the sign on the third page, how dogs have to be on a leash, cleaning up after them. So right now, it's, it's, seems to be an increasing problem with the, as the weather gets better and more children are out playing, the chance of an encounter between an off-leash dog or dogs. Multiple dogs have been observed off-leash at their time. Becomes more, you know, more serious, and it could be a big problem. You know, if the kid gets bitten by an off-leash dog, then I think this escalates to a whole new level. Right now, it's more of a nuisance than a danger. And some of these dog owners are not picking up after their dogs, so they're, public health, they have to. Yeah. There's a couple, there's a stick, couples, I won't go over it, but there's a couple of statements in this pass out. One from an, one from a property owner who made an observation, and one just a statement. Just want to make council aware that, you know, there is this sort of unintended consequence letting dogs off-leash in dark collarwoods. He said, they don't always stay in our collarwood. That's it, thank you.
Goodbye, and we are, have already called this some recreational work.
Okay.
And John just.
Okay.
Say important.
I forgot to thank you for bringing to that. Good one, ladies.
Anyone else scared to speak this evening? No? Okay. Moving on to council minutes. We reviewed the minutes from March twenty, our last regular meeting, and then there were a couple of revisions or comments submitted, Bianca, which have now been made, but they're not in front of us at the moment. And, sorry, but if you all will agree, I would like us to make a motion that we will approve these minutes subject to the borough manager's approval of the, the few changes once he can see them. And then, then it'll be ready, it'll, it can go onto the website, it'll be, you know, we don't have to wait another one to approve it. And there were substantial change, if you want to just give a real brief summary of the changes.
Yes, so I received the email that had the noted changes that were on it. So it included putting in where Mr. Cody said that the number of times that the parking ordinance had been in front of the, of the planning commission. And then it included adding some more detail to Mr. Keith's comments as far as his strong objection from parking ordinance. And then there was, sorry, how do you remember what all it was? Um.
That was one of them.
Yeah, yeah, and there was that in there, and I think it was something where. I added brackets to say, there was something that was saying the planning commission or the borough council. So I went there and I specified that in brackets, since it wasn't a co, a comment from anybody, that planning commission does the recommendation, and then Borough Council does the approval, just so that's true there. And I think it's good. Was there something else to, I feel like there was a couple of.
I think there was, the couple of spellings are named.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all.
But that's all I remember.
Okay, okay, yeah, but I, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember everything else, but.
Yeah.
I have the original sent out, so I'll just cross-reference off the notes.
Yeah. That is it.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
I would note that. You said, you know, and then can be posted on the borough website. There are no twenty-twenty-three minutes posted on the borough website.
I wrote it this week.
Right now.
I know, I really wrote it right off, because it's been on the multiple poll, and we just had that time to be posted.
So this can go on at the same time?
Yeah.
So we'll be up to date then by the end of this. Okay, may I accept a motion?
Make a motion to. Approve the March twentieth, twenty-three minute regular meeting minutes, subject to the aforementioned revisions.
Okay. Mr. Arnold has made a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty-twenty-three regular meeting, subject to the noted revisions. Is there a second?
Oh, sir.
Mr. Brinkley, second, any comments? No comments, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Thank you. And then also on our packet are the draft of the minutes from our work session on April fourth. If anybody has any comments or suggestions on this or corrections, just please, would, would you rather we just send it straight to you, Bianca?
Yeah, that's fine, that's the easiest thing, yeah.
And then if it's substantive, we'll have to be sure that everybody agrees with the same. But usually the corrections are just literal things, so. Okay, so at least review it, and if you have comments, let us know. So the borough manager, you appointed the board boards.
Thank you. Council, your first action this evening for recreation board is awarding contract twenty-three PK one to the Plum Creek Trails.
Okay, I'll accept a motion regarding the award to the Plum Creek Trail Phase Two construction.
Make a motion to support. Make a motion to support. Contract twenty-three dash PK one, concrete trail base two. Driving contract in the amount two hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and forty dollars. These are.
Mr. Arnold has made a motion to award contract twenty-three PK one. Concrete trail phase two to agreement contracting in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Jamie, second in the motion and are there any um, comments or questions? We reviewed this in our last quarter. Um, if there are no comments, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? This passing news.
Your administration, your first act, mine is accepting council president of the year's perhaps resignation.
Yes, unfortunately and sadly, we accept um, it's Oscar House resignation. Uh, and thank her once again for all the good work she has done for the past three years. And um, so at this point, uh, I'd like to take a motion to accept her resignation.
I'll make the motion to accept. Uh, Wendy Oscar House resignation.
Dave Franklin made a motion to accept the resignation of council president Lindsay Osterhaus. Um, do we even second?
I will second that.
Tracy, votes, I can give that motion. Uh, any comments?
If we vote no, does she have to stay?
No, we didn't work. Any other comments? No. Um, and then, then I'll take a vote, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's passed unanimously. Um, this is not our first time to do this. Um, I think as we were, Arnold was maybe, maybe our last, no, if you're right, it was about us. And Mr. Arnold wants to play the sway a couple of years ago. Um, so we pulled out from the files, I'm now trying to find, thank you. Um, that we do have a, a whole policy for this because of those prior two times to fill a borough council vacancy. And um, so that, that was in your uh, packets. And this will be provided and we, we just need to pick dates. And let me, I really do have a, right here to tell them.
You have a better, are you?
Uh, I got, I had all the comments on the um. The, from what, from what we had done in prior years. Uh, I believe that I was kind of proposed that the um, uh, here it is. Okay, thanks. This, according to our policies. Um. We will accept applications from residents of, of Want who are registered voters. And have lived in the borough continuously for at least one year preceding the date of appointment. Um. This. We're asking them, each of them to provide a document. With a letter of interest and their qualifications and a resume or biography, it can be an informal writing rather than official. Kind of standard employment resume. Um, that application would be returned to Scott Cody, borough manager. And um, the process that I'd like to propose, uh, the timeline for this process. Is today we are announcing the vacancy, April seventeenth will be the announcement date. Um. The open application period, which is the period in which they can supply this application is from April seventeen. And I'd like to recommend that we do it through May first. And then council will take action on the appointment by interviewing all applicants. And that interview, um, that council action for appointments will be honored before. And I'd like it to be in May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, which is our next voting session. However, I would like to propose that we. Um, have advertised or we advertise and announced. An interim meeting that would be an official meeting at which we can vote if we so choose. And do that interview process. And I thought if we did it in the week between our two meetings and I was going to suggest to May eighth. If that worked for council members. And we could have it at our normal time, or if it's easier for some of you with families that they come earlier, we could do it earlier. Um. But that's the, the schedule I would like to propose. Anybody have a comment about that?
That is a quick question, so May eighth would be like the interview process.
Yeah.
A lot, and the candidates would come here for that.
Come here, um, and they would, we would have already received their resumes and their reasons for wanting to run. And then they would, each person would be given a three-minute opportunity. To stand up and just introduce themselves so we have a sense of who that person is. And at that time, any council member um, or mayor can. Ask questions. If you have some specific question, you can address it to the applicant. And then at the end of the meeting, um, because it would be a formally advertised legal meeting, we may vote if we feel we're ready. Um, and if we do that, that person would then be installed. At the regular meeting the following week, and we will see there. Uh, because we've been able to tell them ahead of time. So that's more or less how we did it last time, slight variations, but um, it worked, it seemed to work. And it gave. Instead of trying to do it at the beginning of a formal meeting. And it takes quite a bit of time and it's awkward, I think. To try to keep that moving and keep, you know, really holding people to three minutes and. Where this way they can be a little more in the mowly and a chance to kind of exchange ideas.
And for the last time the vacancy was built, it was a separate reading of its own.
We'll see that, we'll look at that. Good idea. So, do those dates work for people?
Uh, I mean, I really have time, I get tried going, I tried sneaking out in between town meetings and then just like, I think. Like a extra counseling while I'm out of town, but I can try as long as there's a zoom.
Yeah, if it's a ten minutes, then that would be done, but I. And the same for you, Amanda, if you would need to attend by zone, you could.
Um, I, I know for, at least for me, like that date works, but I'm just wondering with like not knowing. Like if we, if this needs scheduled now and not, not obviously being able to see the future and know how many people are applying, if it would just make sense. To be a little bit earlier, just in case there, we do have several applicants.
You mean like six thirty or six o'clock?
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm, and again, I just, I don't know how much interest there would be being so close to like election season, but I'm just thinking. That, that might make sense is to have it a little bit earlier, just in case we do have several.
Primary, okay, primary's on the sixteenth.
So the week, so after our formal meeting.
Day after, yes. I'm fine with six o'clock.
Okay, the six o'clock. Would that work for you?
I, I can absolutely jump in on six, the seven o'clock happens, but I can join at six.
Okay, so then, so that's what we're doing, six o'clock.
May eighth.
On May eighth, and it will be an advertised public meeting that, um, and it will be put on the website and um. Information's and Mike's here, so it will probably be in the newspaper. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Uh, would like to take a motion to accept the actuary assumption for the police.
Make a motion to accept the actuarial assumption for the twenty twenty-three actuarial evaluation report. Date in March the first, twenty twenty-three for the police.
That is, uh, they have a second?
I'll second. These are the same, these are the same numbers that we discussed in a separate meeting of the actuary, right?
Yeah.
And they, and they're here, these. Two letters.
Yeah, by the cause of both evaluations, free or file. Highlighting the three recommendations, one is the interest rate assumption. Inflation rate assumption, assumption, and then salary increase assumptions too. If you vote affirmative, we accept it, we sign it, and then we'll start the revaluation of this plan.
Right. So it's, it's, this is exactly what we reviewed with um, the, uh, audit with the. Actuaries and that was, okay, so, um, any further discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Unanimous?
Okay.
And I could take the, a motion to accept the actuary assumptions for the general employees.
Make a motion to accept the actuarial assumption for the twenty twenty-three actuarial evaluation. Date in March first, twenty twenty-three for the general employees pension plan.
Mister um. Frankly, so frankly, we made a motion to accept the actuary assumption for the twenty twenty-three evaluation dated March first, twenty twenty-three. For the general employees pension plan. Um, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Tracy, hold a second with that motion, any discussion? Uh, there being no discussion, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm passing unanimously.
Thank you, council.
And, and just for the record. Dave, do you want to talk anything about that? Um, this that?
The uh, yeah, in review, we had with the actuary was pretty in-depth and. They're saying that, uh, based on their projections and the things that were. Seconded by Mr. Immerman whenever we were talking, they led him for these, led him for these minor. Adjustments in the long-term projections of the pension plan, which by all accounts are fairly healthy.
So we're healthy, our benefits are healthy.
We will know more specifically when we see the upcoming report, but the. That is, but I would also point out that that report. Uh, reflects uh, circumstances that are eighteen months to two years.
Okay, uh, the next item is uh, resolution thirteen regarding appointing Phyllis Anderson to the Congress of Neighborhood Communities. Yeah, take it, accept a motion?
How I make a motion to chip for resolution thirteen of twenty twenty-three, appointing Phyllis Anderson as the appointed. Federal representative to the Congress of Neighborhood Communities, connect for a one-year term.
Tracy has made, Tracy Holt has made a motion to approve resolution number thirteen of twenty twenty-three, appointing Phyllis J. Anderson. As the appointed official representative to the Congress of Neighborhood Communities. Connect for a one-year term expiring April twenty twenty-four. Um, you have a second?
I'll second.
Janie Lee Harvey said. Um, and, uh, and discussion, any discussion possibly, um, Scott, could you give a little explanation?
Sure, Phyllis has been affiliated with Connect either as a student of Giscy Program and choosing Pitt. Uh, unofficially, the Oklahoma, Oklahoma Borough has been also represented by Phyllis with Connect and participated in some of their, their conferences. And meetings and some of their strategic plans. Um, they're asking to clear, they're asking us to clear the paperwork and just do the formal resolution to make the appointment complete.
Scott, are we uh. Doing any liabilities from conference costs?
For this note.
Is, is this something where in the future we would always have an official representative serving in this capacity?
Yes, it's an appointment, it's, it's one-year terms, they just keep reappointing it, correct?
If these are considered additional responsibilities, have we considered some sort of additional stipend? Available for Phyllis for doing this, if it's above and beyond normal job description requirements?
We can argue, we can discuss the affiliation, um. It's, it's like that belonging to a, a committee of professional managers or something like that, it's just. Part of the process, it's part of the network that we have in the communities in Pennsylvania. Or blocking, or blocking Pennsylvania municipal league. It's just the things we do.
It's not an extraordinary.
No.
Um, responsibility, it's more of a. Regular kind of ongoing activity.
Yes. She's our representative.
Any other comments? No? Um, all those in favor, aye, all those opposed? Passing unanimously. Um. And accept a motion um, to the proposed ordinance, oh, three, uh, twenty twenty-three regarding vehicle and traffic.
I'll make a motion to authorize the borough manager to advertise proposed ordinance zero-three of twenty twenty-three. Mending and updating Borough Code of ordinances, chapter one nine and five, vehicles and traffic. By updating parking restrictions to address parking at electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations. And amending both chapters one thirty-nine and one ninety-five to update language for parking for persons with additional.
Hey, Mr. Frankly made a motion to authorize the borough manager to advertise proposed ordinance oh-three of twenty twenty-three. Um, you have a second? Miss Leonardo, you said, um, any discussion?
Simply put, this. Ordinance allows the borough to now enforce the eating parking spaces on Third Street. But also update the language holistically in the Borough Code to take the word out of the handicap out of everywhere, but using the appropriate, I say appropriate more. Except the terms for individuals with disabilities in parking spaces.
Out of curiosity, when they did the survey to determine like the best space in the borough, did they also make recommendations where? If down the line, this is successful and we wanted to expand this programming, where would be the next logical space?
Yeah, I mean, did they flag some? I don't think they like did them in order though. Do you mean, like, I, I think there was like five sites in the borough that they identified as being like plausible sites, but I don't think there was like a. Obvious number two per se, that you're entertained about.
I agree, they, yes, there are at least two or three other places in the borough, but this was the best one to start off.
Okay.
And um, as we discussed at our last meeting. Uh, we're going to be sure this is also put on our website and um, and it. Is always advertised and it's always posted on Borough Building and all the normal thing. Um, but we just want to say that it will be. Um, any other comments? No? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed unanimously. And I'd like a motion to accept the hatch proposals.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept. Burner, the head proposal, beginning in March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Complete design admitting services, the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. For a total of a amount of one million sixty-nine thousand dollars.
You have a second?
I have a second, one million sixty-nine.
Thirty pounds. One million sixty-nine. Yeah, one zero six nine. Here, yeah. Um, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brackley seconds. And um. This, as usual, we discussed this at our last meeting. And um, I believe it was reflected on the paperwork that we showed you. Uh, regarding the bonds, so.
So we also had a clarification of their standards, it's part of that.
Five three seven.
Five, five thirty-seven. And this original proposal is updated to the additions data. So.
I, it's part of the discussion process, I would like minutes to reflect that. Uh, Hatch has informed us that they will. Basically, uh. Charge eighteen thousand five hundred dollars as a cap. For the updated five-three-seven plan. Now, they cannot guarantee that number at this point, but if they need additional funding beyond that eighteen. Thousand five hundred, they approach the borough and council will talk about increasing.
So does it not exceed?
Right, that's already.
That will be exceeding if we live in.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other comments? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And uh, I know. Uh, unanimous, and I, I place this as our first growing step. Um, towards moving into these construction, yeah. So this is present, thank you. Mr. Arnold and Dave. Um. For your, and you. Yeah. Um, so, okay, uh, a motion to approve the Hatch preliminary design report.
Make a motion to approve the Hatch preliminary design report. Dated March twenty third, vote twenty thirty.
That's wrong.
Pardon?
That's my type of twenty twenty three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was type of.
Yeah. Living in the past. Twenty twenty three.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Amanda Pagnoni stepped in with the motion, any discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously, at, at this point, I'd like to add two additional motions.
Insert to keep this contract inserted, the advertisement for the Plum Creek Pump Station.
I'm, I would like a comment from you.
We, from the council back in February, I believe, authorized, you, you gave a blanket authorization of the borough manager to authorize the Plum Creek Interceptor Project when they were ready to do so. As you saw in the transmit, I sent to you Saturday morning, Hatch has given you the, the timeframe they do for both first advertisement, pre-construction meeting. Second advertisement, actual bid opening and awarding. If you want to go specific in the minutes and show the dates of.
I think you should, I think the original. Things stated that the advertisement would be placed either by Hatch or the verts. And Hatch has informed this, and it's borough's responsibility.
And. You can, as you say, the date for the first advertisement was April nineteenth and the second was April twenty eighth and the, uh. Not only with the value dispatched this morning. To make the first advertising deadline, so there, it's already in the queue for both publication dates.
By us or you guys?
It's by us, they wrote the template, we just turned it into what it looks like coming from us and.
So we never formally approved this publication for this advertisement.
Right, that's why we should know.
Well.
Do we normally, yeah, do we normally?
Did it back in February.
We did.
We did, yeah, it was a blanket authorize the borough manager to advertise the Plum Creek Pump Station improvements.
Okay, so maybe, I'm not sure if you mean another. Motion, but maybe what we need is a statement for the minutes. Other dates and the new prior approval, it will be advertised on.
April nineteenth. And April twentieth.
Are you, are you good with that, John?
Yes.
Was there a second?
That was, it, it's where advertising, eight, oh, eighteen, the equal to seven, okay.
So that will be in our minutes, Elizabeth, we'd like to know that we had prior approval of that. We have a motion, there was a request. For road closure for Porsche Club Car Show. Uh, between Copan Avenue and Riverfront Street. Uh, for this summer, may I, I'll accept the motion?
I'll make that motion if I can see the.
No.
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Porsche Car Show request. Close Allegheny Avenue, Allegheny Avenue. Between College and Riverfront Street. Between the hours of eight AM and eleven AM. On the following dates, May thirteenth, June tenth, July eighth, August fifth, September ninth. And October seventh.
You have a second to this motion? Jamie, it's Leonardo seconds. And then we'll take discussion on this, I, I have a thought, first one. This is the street in front of the lot restaurant, the bank, the lot, and then the other buildings. And I spoke with Scott briefly about this at these, this is the Sunday mornings. So most of those other businesses. If they are open. There is parking in the lot behind the building, which is the real entrance to those, those offices. And I think there's a gym there and I'm not sure exactly what else. My thought was. That we approve two days. And make sure that there's no problems. For the other owners of the other buildings or other, other, other businesses or. Just, just to get assurance that it's all working right. Before we approve one, two, three, four, five, six Sundays. Mornings. That's my.
You have any issue?
We did not last year, the tree department closed the barricades out of late before they set them up and they never received their. My office didn't receive any points on that.
Okay, well, that's helpful, I, I know what was done before in practice.
I'm not opposed to approving part of it, but I think maybe it would make more sense to do half and half, like the first three. See how the first two go and then approve the second half.
So approve three, rather than that, that's.
There's, there's.
Yeah, there's, yeah. Um. I, does anybody else feel one way or the other about this, whether they. Moving along or just.
You feel like this is a fairly important. Kind of thing to do, and I'm not fine. If this was during a work week or even Saturday, we could have a, a, they went, I would have no obligation to. I think this is.
Since it's been done before. At least that no, we've had no problem.
We've had no issue with that.
Yeah.
Right now.
Well, they just.
Got straight up.
Okay.
We did, yeah, that first time when it just happened to pop up, we did get phone calls at the borough, but never since that happened has it. Never come on our radar. If we do have, I mean, if we, if we approve this and it turns out not to work, we can always go back and. Confirm it, right? Council will no authorize disclosures and.
Any other comments? Then, then, as fans, as written. I'll take a vote on the motion for the Porsche Guard Club Show. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimously pass. On community planning. Amanda, I, I sent you, I think, a, a brief note about that. At our last meeting, Amanda had come up with some ideas. For website and information for the borough and you and Phyllis have been talking about it. And my suggestion was that if we could, if you and Phyllis could orchestrate. Some kind of informal meeting and people on council that would be interested in attending could attend and sort of walk through this idea.
So. Um, one of the things that I think that we need to, to have that meeting is a little bit of information from the public of like what's working and what's not. So what I would love to do is some sort of survey through Google or Survey Monkey or one of those.
But that would, that would be a good thing to have, this, your first meeting is to discuss that, how that.
Right.
First, but first, I think we need to know kind of. The parameters of the idea of it. And then, and then get people to talk and see what concerns or. How it's going to be managed and just kind of work through that before we. Kind of dive in. And I thought that would work better in an informal setting. Where everybody can just throw out ideas and during a work, then during a, a regular work session. Get a sub group and then take it to the next work session. Amanda, you have to, Phyllis, I don't know.
You do.
Okay, so Scott and Jamie are in.
Right. Since I have a very specific. Medium and workable. Idea, namely setup of electronic file, the non-privileged. Meeting back information. Want to be available to the public.
Okay, and then.
After they make it available.
And John, I have that on my list of things like.
Without the freedom of information. I'd like to be there.
So that'd be good, then, so you can attend too and, and, and then Phyllis is already working on it with you, so. And I'll try to attend if I can. So there'll be, we won't be enough to vote, so that'll be fine.
Correct.
Okay, yes. Finance? Take a motion for the warrant list? Anybody's free to do it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant list for March twenty twenty three in the amount of two hundred ninety one thousand, six hundred and twenty eight and eight cents.
Tracy Holt made a motion to approve the warrant list for March twenty twenty three in the amount of two hundred ninety one thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars and eight cents. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Dave Brinkley, second. Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passing unanimously. Scott's going to talk a little bit about our investments in short term. CDs that we have sort of been talking and mentioned at different times and we were sort of ready before and.
At the committee level, we cashed out the CDs at Citizen Bank over the last several years, giving about two percent at the best. We also looked at the capital reserve fund with Randy present and noticed that we have about a hundred seventy five thousand sitting there for a fire truck we never paid, never have spent. That's currently unbudgeted, so we're going to leave, leave that as well, all told, we're looking at about six hundred thousand dollars in cash, but we're going to, I mean, in the immediate future. So. I solicited quotes for CDs, equivalent type of investments from. The local banks in the borough as well as Edward Jones. And of the entities we solicited. Dollar Bank, Edward Jones actually, and Huntington Bank came back with the best rates, anywhere between four point two to four point five percent, depending on the term of the rates. Currently, we're looking at six month, excuse me, three month and six month CD rates as being the best. They're all at the IC insured, but the guarantee that even further, we're spreading out between among the three of them. And no more than a hundred, you know, hundred fifty thousand dollar CD terms of. The industry crew, we then generate back to us and we can reevaluate. Three to six months from now, how we would invest based on what the current rates are going. Based on the actual US Treasury. Uh, anywhere between three, three months and six months, depends, yeah, nothing longer than six months. We, we did reach out to those three entities over last week, so they could do the paperwork to us, we'd start doing the wiring, start investing in the CDs.
Were their rates the same for the three and six?
Now, the, depending on what time of the CD you got, again, with Jones, they're quoting best rates because they can shop anywhere in the United States where there's not a bank. Huntington was offering two types, one was a, with a type of a DDA account, which is a, we said it creates a type of little state as mutual fund account. And then it goes out that way, and the Dollar Bank was just a straight shot CD.
Okay, so is it a shorter term rate higher or lower than the longer term?
The shorter term is the better rate of which you could get, yes.
Okay.
Like three, three months wasn't, in some instances, the three month was not the best. And twelve was, wasn't.
I can see you again, but it's on mute.
It defaults, now we're, we default to mute.
Okay, now we're back.
We're still currently live here, everybody's can get a second here. Let's continue, it pops back up again.
Moving on to public safety, safety, um, there. Uh, yes, if you're back, it is the monthly release report, if anyone has questions for the chief. And we want to add.
Uh, just brief update on the cameras and vehicle. Borough manager went out and picked the police throughout the day, which came in two months early. And we're now waiting for parts. It's not this, the old end of the new. But the cameras, three have been installed in the vehicles, mobiles supposed to be on site, made first, second, third. For information and training on the body cameras. They've been received, the grab was received. But just body camera work, so. That's really the only, our networks was out, we'll administer a check, make sure we were good to go, we're going to do a few improvements. As far as server security and things like that. But right now it's on track, we should be implemented by the time we get everything state back in the middle of May. The body cameras coming home.
We need, I do, this, borough coordination, having the standard operating procedures.
I believe you're just the policy change, which.
And they all got the target date, A L R E, approved of one amendment, which was still fluctuating at the time, how we get it. Fixed, but I don't know if that specifically needs. From the council, if it does, we can. Based on June, we can get every train.
Um. And we got, he said we would adopt it that way.
My recollection is that there was a formal passage of the S O P. We passed the pursuit policy and a other policy that should have been two years ago. The use of forces updated last year, assuming there will be policies to. Yes, they're all.
Yeah, uh, uh, to say, since we can do that, no, it just needs to be up by.
Um, anything else? Uh, yes, um. I'd like to um. Take this time to extend our due sympathies um to the family of Dolly Cremenza. Dolly began her teaching career at, as a first grade teacher in a renewed school district, then moved into her position of director. Her career of thirty-one years impacted many students who adored her. She also served over thirty years on the Parks and Recreation Committee. Many of you are probably familiar with her articles in the Oakmont Newsletter on the history of our parks in the borough. She also assisted with decorating the pitch window of the Historical Society, recognizing our soldiers and veterans. Uh, Dolly and her husband Vince kept very detailed picture books dating back to the early years of Oakmont. And her volunteer efforts were outstanding for this community. In addition to Dolly being a devoted mother, wife, grandmother, she was also very devoted to Oakmont and always was willing to help in many ways. She'll forever be remembered especially by me, she was my mentor, my role model, she brought me into the community volunteer circle of Oakmont. Again, over thirty years ago, and um I wanted to take this time to recognize her and for us to take a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you, and may her memory be eternal.
Thank you very much, I am a member of many years.
Yeah, she, she was really one of our best, uh, greatest volunteers and were, made, made that word volunteer for Oakmont, but she did. Yes.
Uh, I do have two other little things here, or two, not little, two things under um public safety. That um, we mentioned at our last meeting that William Albright, who's been serving. As our emergency management coordinator for the borough, uh, retired, effectively March twenty-fourth, um, twenty twenty-three. And um, Scott, can you talk about where we've gone since that?
In the interim, um, Karen Rogers has stepped up to be the interim director, EMC. Um, he and I have spoken offline and he candidly said he does not want nor desire to be in charge. Uh, but he likes his position deputy, so we were gonna give some information, um. Anybody willing, that meets the criteria to be the emergency managing coordinator to submit applications in the borough. Um, we, I've heard it, you know, spread interest from some of the members of the community. But we'll make a more formal announcement through a label notice and a post date on the borough's website.
Okay, thank you. And um, and then also the fire alarm.
We received an email today that as we read it, Joe Planck and I read it, the materials are all with the installing subcontractor. And that they're finalizing their clearances with the state and the school district to make them install some come on. Um, Joe. At my direction or my request, uh, sent one back to Thurl Siegel to give us a hard deadline now that we have the equipment in place. Um, he did say thank you to, it was. Um, and to verify um that, in fact, we do have the equipment, the installation company has their clearances, and it gives a hard deadline when it's supposed to happen. For the two fire trucks, the, the first pumper truck received no bids, the second time we missed, I missed a bid. So with our blessing, they've gone to another website called um Ben Brindley Fire Mountain Apparatus. It's a worse, it's a wholesale for used fire equipment, it's another online auction system. Um, that truck is gonna go online tomorrow. Once the aerial truck receives its annual certification for its ladder, then the borough, the fire department will approach us about advertising and sell the error. I can tell you this, the air, there were only a handful of entities that do the certification of the ladder. That were in the queue, and when they come in, they'll come and probably do a bunch of new regions, so they're just, when they show up, they're just gonna show up and do it. Now, why I'm doing, those researchers bring these equivalent, we missed it, and see if we can save the process by a couple of months and go directly, go directly with that, with an advertising and a payment. Yeah.
Um. Moving on to public works, we had a question to award the um twenty twenty-three roadway improvement program.
They've voted for a contract twenty-three dash R O one, twenty twenty-three roadway improvement program. With base bid and alternatives, alternates numbers one and two, Youngblood paving. In, in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Mr. Arnold made a motion to award contract twenty-three R O one, twenty twenty-three roadway improvement program. With base bid and alternates numbers one and two to Youngblood paving in the amount of four hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Tracy Pauls seconded that motion. Um, any discussion?
Elizabeth Rose will be put on the website under construction projects.
Good.
Do we have an approximate date when they will be starting this?
No, we only have it after we have our pre-construction meeting, once we get that election council.
They're already paving eleven street.
That's Lindy David, that's gas, that's gas.
Okay.
That's not, no, I think that, um, if you, if you caught Sean's report last week, Youngblood wanted to start yesterday. On their own, but they have to wait till they sign, we haven't awarded, they have to sign the contracts, but yes, they are eager to start.
That's good, and it's good to put it on the website, cause people do wonder, and then they have an idea when they're coming and get, and all of that, so. Um, any other discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye. Patrick Annesley. And our last motion is to change order number one for contract twenty-two S one for Plum Creek Interceptor Improvement.
I make a motion to approve change order number one for contract twenty-two, twenty-two dash S one. The Plum Creek Interceptor Improvements in the amount of eleven pounds and tons.
Okay, Mr. Arnold made a motion to approve change order number one for contract twenty-two S one Plum Creek Interceptor Improvements. In the amount of eleven thousand dollars, do I second? Mr. Brinkley seconded, uh, Scotten?
If you recall, council, the awarded contractor did another camera of the routes. And discovered that some of the pipe does not need to be replaced, but when they made that discovery, they also found another manhole that was buried under years of paving on Plum Street. The eleven thousand dollars simply is the unit cost to bring that manhole back up to street grade.
Good. And I said there are only two motions, but I have a third. Um, that's in addition to the agenda. Uh, as you all know, we've been talking about the Dark Hollow Woods. Um. Rejuvenation and a project that we're going to start on. And we've had a number of meetings with people in, in the borough, uh, who, and some experts. About um. Rejuvenating the plantings. And uh upgrading the pathways and bridges and taking care of water runoff. And a number of things that are going on in Dark Hollow Woods, it hasn't had a lot of attention for a while and um. Some of the ex- experts, especially the uh horticultural people, are strongly encouraging that we really um. Take some steps to preserve the woods and get new plantings and um, so in. Our organization of this, we're working to create a new um. Uh, board, similar to our record, but it would be our Dark Hollow Woods board. And one of the things that we need before we can really get moving is a master plan. Um, that prepared, that is acceptable to the state, and with that approved, with a, with a professional master plan. Completed, we then are in a position that we can go out to the various entities for grants and awards. And um, we decided initially, there was an. Uh, the initial goal among the first people working was to um, request money from the state to pay for that master. But we had set some money in the borough budget this year, and then we. Found some money that um was going to be used for a different purpose in the parks and was, was satisfied elsewhere. Um. And. Uh, I, Dave is interrupting me because he said, did we change, did we vote on the change order?
Yeah, did we vote on the change order? I think we did a second, but I don't know.
No, I think there you can get on this one. And after.
I thought it, you did.
I think we did, but you guys been voting, if you want, real fast.
I believe you did.
Yeah, I haven't done.
Cause we had a discussion on favor say aye.
My train was not running real quick. So anyway, so uh, we ended up purchasing a truck. Uh, from our bond money, from our general obligation bond fund. Uh, which is the uh elec- electric vehicle that we had decided. So the money that we had originally set aside for a new truck for the park became available and could be dedicated to the Dark Hollow Woods Park. Cause it's all part of, or all of this one uh category within the borough. So we decided instead of um gathering, asking for money for the master plan, that we could pay for the master. So we have received a bid for this um from E D, E P V, Environmental Planning and Design. Which is the company that um has prepared the borough's comprehensive plan. And updated it a couple of years ago, is therefore already very familiar with players. And the park and our maps and, you know, they already have all of this in their system. Um. And they were also working on the original request for the grant. Which kind of um made an outline of what that plan needs. So we decided that we should pursue this with them. And um, we received, I think it really has on the desk, we received a bid for um. The master plan for the Dark Hollow Woods. And as you can see, it's a fairly extensive process, but it takes a number of months. It would take maybe in July, oh, she's, she's estimating five months to complete all the tasks that are required for the state. We have to get public involvement, we have to get public opinions about the changes and the plans that we wanna make, um. We need expert advice. And uh, this one, we need a phenological evaluation, I'm sorry, I had it woke up. Which is about the timing of cyclical or seasonal biological events, such as migrations, a lab, focusing this up for the um. Landscape uh of, and the animals in the woods, so it's a very um complicated process. It doesn't sound hard, but it actually is fairly hard, and the benefit of it is, once we have it. Then the committee that is formed is charged initially to follow that, that. And so they can break it out as we wish and start down various paths, and we will know that we're not. Taking a step that will need to be changed here, we can, we be sure we're doing this in the proper orders of development for the park. And not putting a trail and then discover we're gonna take water, the water issues and dig up that trail, so. Just because that's so easy to have happen with a lot of people involved, and so this bid is for forty-five thousand. At the very. It's an, and um, I will suggest, when we look at this, uh, because we didn't receive it until um. Just now, that. If, I would, I would like to suggest that we make this motion and consider passing uh this. But with a not to exceed included in the description of price. Uh, because we may, once there's more time to sit down with the drafter, there's names Carolyn Abel. And really, flesh out what she had put in here, we may decide that. There may be a few projects that we would not choose to do in the, in the initial plans, and maybe we can, we can tweak this. If we, if we do a not to exceed. Um, as our, as our. Subject to the source.
Doesn't know, you'd wanna do a motion to add it to the agenda. I didn't sure if it wasn't there on the agenda for me.
So it was two, two, two motions, so I wanted a motion to add.
Allow public comment, thank you, yes, there's public comments, since it wasn't on the agenda.
Ah, okay, sorry, thank you. I've owned this is my first real official meeting, so take a little moment, learn new memories.
Um, Nancy, was Carolyn then paid for the grant, that didn't happen, or the grant application that Carolyn was working on? They didn't submit?
I don't think we paid her something.
So like that, like. I'm just wondering, like. And it wasn't submitted, like, can that money go toward, I don't know.
Right.
Get a discount, does she just sit on it, like?
Well, there probably would be some worth that she did in the original plan that was distinctly for a grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then other work that she did, that would be um part of the overall picture.
Oh, a part of.
Okay. So I know I'm sort of asking for something that's a little loosey. It's, you know, it's not quite as pinned down as we would, we would, we would be, but um. I think we need, Scott, I want to keep moving, absolutely, another month would just delay this to, to the summer.
Remember, you had this discussion at the works, I mean.
Right.
Karen was waiting for the agreement, it came today.
Right. I was sort of doing that background for you all, cause it's new, um, it's new to the borough.
I think as long as we, we may not reflect that we have talked about this.
Right.
And, and maybe before, then we're not giving the impression that we're trying to.
Right.
To this thing, or without having presented it and so.
And I think we've even talked about it a number of months ago, when we talked about the original organization meetings that are being held. So it, it's not a new, I mean, I have all kinds of pictures, so it's, it's not a brand new. And it's actually started in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, it's been something moving, moving slowly through the. We've to, to get to where we're now really ready to go, so. Um, so we'll wait a minute for Mr. Arnold before we do that, but um. Do anything, um, how about, how, will we go ahead and do our council comments while we wait for Mr.? Um. Let's start with the. We, uh, great.
Uh, my, my comments, uh, is more of a question, okay. Um, do we need anything in particular in the way of document? That we need to get the, the polino construction paper to sign off for? Or have we finally gotten all the way through that process to the point where we can? Have an informed discussion with them to get their approval for the easement that we've been talking about. Right.
Um, since that's layback position, we're just gonna save that on for executive session.
Anything else, Dave?
None.
Okay, how about Tracy Pauls?
Uh, well, I just wanted to say, Scott and I attended the Alloaming League of Municipalities Conference, Kate was there also. Um, this weekend at Seven Springs, and it was very informative, so thank you, Scott, for allowing um me to attend.
You're counsel, you go where you want.
Yeah, so I.
Thank you for letting me.
Probably do a summary for the rest of council, I do have some books and I have some handouts and I have some information if anybody wants to share them, but. Uh, there, there was a P A legislative update, um, it was very good, um, all of the representatives, a lot of representatives were there, ours, um, Joe McAndrew was there. Um, there was a number of different people, but they talked about the radar guns for municipalities are a big deal, and they're trying to get bills passed for that. They also talked about incentives for fire departments um to increase, um, you know, recruiting, you know, people for fire departments and everything. Um, there's an employee benefits information update about any of the increases co- uh cost and how, how municipalities can um offset that. Of course, there was an animal welfare one, which I'll talk about in my next comment, but it was about, all about animal welfare control solutions, really kind of nailing down the different entities. Um, Edna was able to speak on their compassionate, um, compassionate care community package. And what they have done, um, with some of the bills that are the resolutions that passed. There was also Alloaming County Council updates, um, there was innovative solutions for funding park projects. Uh, and there was a solicitor's panel that Kate was part of, and she did an excellent, excellent um. Uh, presentation on the tax assessment, and I do have her handout too, which was very good. Um, and then just an update on the informational meeting this week with the Maine Society, I did forward you all of that information. And there are other communities from the networking that I was able to do at the um Al- Alamo, or Alloaming League Municipalities Conference. Um, Fox Chapel may attend and some others may attend, because it's just informational to see what we can do as an alternative um for deer calling. So, that's just.
That was good.
It was very good, yes, it was a very good conference, and we did get our award, which I think either Scott had, or the banner community. Um, so we were, you know, one of those, um, but yeah, it was very, very good, a lot of, a lot of attendance, a lot of networking, like I said, I mean. Kate, you could probably speak to it too, I enjoyed it.
I had a nice moment where one of my other, cause they had a whole session on E V charging, and one of my other communities was like, well, we're looking at E V charging. I was like, oh, you should talk to Oakmont, they already did it, great, we already know the process, so, yeah, it was, it was a nice event, it was a nice opportunity.
And within the first half hour, my president, my presence there always asked about the bakery. At least six times, at least six times, and it's there, yes.
Okay, John, um, we'll hop back up to you, would you have a comment tonight?
Yes, several. Uh, first, uh, I was gonna comment on the A B M clock alternate. Uh, I'd like to thank Amanda for stepping up to represent me. In my absence at the April meeting, I, I think I sent you an email with the correct address. You should have received it, it's in your emails. Uh. My next issue is, I wanna reiterate what I said at the last meeting about EMS funding. We're not done with EMS. Not problem. I'd like to make a suggestion that we set up committee, maybe the same people that worked on the EMS recommendation itself. To consider our alternatives in coming up with the correct equitable way of funding. The new contribution, new financial contribution, which we will have to make. For EMS. Emergency medical service. And there, you know, I, I'm not saying I have any answers, there, there are several alternatives, it's simple, it's simply increase the knowledge. Uh, or the uh alternatives would be. Or the uh alternative would be find some sort of fee. That may be assessed since the mileage only applies to property tax, but not everyone who. Is a potential user of the service. Makes property tax. So there there are a number of considerations and perhaps this committee could also reach out. To other communities like Plum or O'Hara that are currently making. Significant contributions for their emergency medical service, to see how they're financed. And we could also talk to A B N cog members who were previously served by L V A S as we were. To see. What their, you know, what their plans are for financing. The EMS contributions that they will have to be making. So I I'd really like to recommend that such a committee be established so that we can finish. The whole EMS issue in a proper manner.
And just make it as a, and I believe the um cost this coming year is fifty thousand, is that correct? It's fifty thousand for the given service, fifty thousand for the animals. Set aside in a sales account for the end. So it's two hundred dollars, so it's significant and the fifty thousand will be, is the annual cost for membership.
Right, yeah. Uh third issue, I I I already talked about, that's still over from Dark Hollow Woods on private property. Uh fourth, this is a very important case for the botching court. May eight, begin league season. There are a couple of umbrellas that need to be replaced. I don't think we can do boards. This year because it would interrupt.
Oh, you should see, wait, can we back up one second to the botching court?
Yeah.
I've already touched on just finding a board, uh that's very relative property basis, not like a pocket of sand. Cause they're they're originals of the court nerves, there there's story, but even this.
Yeah.
Their uses, you know, nine months out of the year there. I think we'll do next time, it's actually equitable, you can see they didn't do that this past.
Well, they, well, you didn't put it, somebody put. And there's stabber damage on both of them and one, I think one of them can.
We're already looking at our online personnel as well.
And botchy leagues, do they pay a fee?
Yes, the 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 fee is two hundred dollars per team. I forget how many teams there are. I think ten, twelve, maybe more teams, so over a hundred people in the league itself. You know, they make contributions for improvements to the to the uh. To the courts. It's, I would say those courts are probably the. Other than Riverside Park and most intensely used public park in borough.
Yeah, they're great, it's a great, it's a very successful part.
Well, they first, they start in the first week of May, maybe it's my day. No, no, if there's conflict, I just.
One, they're responsible, were you losing?
No, no, I don't think my absence from the team would be that much of a loss.
And you're, and you said you had one more issue? Oh, you wanna sing to us? Well, you've got to. You can punch me the first. Tell them what it is.
Okay, this is just because the Porsche came up. There's an old song by Janice, by the late great Janice Joplin about Porsches. The lyrics run. My friends all ride Porsches and must make events. Work hard all my lifetime and help from my friend. So, oh Lord, won't you buy me Mercedes better than this?
And it's sure have been a beautiful song. Okay, we have to um. Well, let's finish it comments, um Ms. Leonardo. And Ms. Pagnotta?
Uh I have a couple of things, um one, I just wanna say that I appreciate the flexibility of being able to zoom, I hope that that's something that always continues. Because I know as a working mom, it gets really tricky with balancing kids' schedules and childcare, so I really appreciate this and I hope that this encourages other young. Parents to wanna get involved in the community, knowing that there is this flexibility.
Yeah, absolutely, and that would be forever, your favorite.
Yeah, I love it, big heart. Um the second thing, and I I mentioned this to Scott briefly when I was visiting the borough building, I think it would be. Really nice for constituents walking at home, um on Amazon, you can buy webcams for like twenty three dollars. And they're U S B and they come with tripods, but when people are speaking at the podium. You only see the back of their head when they're virtual, and so it would be really nice to join, um have a second zoom, join in. And then when there is a speaker to be able to turn that camera on and off. If it couldn't be up where Scott is sitting, even to put it over near where Phyllis sits, so it's like that angle and then you wouldn't necessarily get the rest of the public. Um I think that that would be something to help engage viewers in the Zoom because. We see a bird's eye view and we don't get to actually see the people speaking. Uh and like I said, the cheapest one is twenty three dollars and ninety nine cents and that was just on the first page, so I'm sure there might be cheaper ones. And I think that's like an easy, quick fix. Um something else is I wanted to know if there was an update with that line of vision solution for the students with putting the Jersey barrier or other sort of. Barrier in the way of that parking space?
Probably happening this week. The third block at that one parking space.
And then um just thinking about us filling this vacancy and. Not that, not, not that I, you know, wanna see vacancies happen, but the unique part about that is you get to see and you get to hear from. All of the candidates and I think that's something that's really missing in our community, and so what I'm wondering is. Our next, have the date in front of me, our next opportunity to tell us what, um May second? Would we be able to invite anyone running for council in the. Primaries just to introduce themselves on camera, so community members can join in, it could be a very quick, like almost like public comments. Hi, I'm so and so and I'm running, give them three minutes to speak. Um it doesn't need to be questions, it doesn't need to be a debate, it doesn't need to be back and forth, but just giving every person that's running. That virtual platform stage where if I don't know who these people are and I just see signs up around Oakmont. I can put a name with a face, so I just thought that might be something nice if they are registered and they are gonna be on the ballot. That could be.
I think we oughta think about that, that's not legal. That's not legal.
Why?
The borough is not supposed to take a position.
We're not taking a position. It's not.
I haven't, um I would say that. You know, it would be akin to public comment in that it would obviously need to be neutral, open to anyone, um. Because even if it was not formally asked for, I think if someone came up and said, I would aim that, you know, we'd let them speak.
Borough resources, borough money. To aid in a political campaign, that just can't be legal.
It's not paying for anything, uh if.
The borough taxpayers are paying.
Something, I think this is something that needs, we need to research.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody, we can't at this moment say yea or nay, I don't think. Um for certain, so I think we need to give Kate a chance. To think about this and make into it a little bit and all of us to think about it and see if there may be. Um that's one possibility, is is there a different possibility that could maybe work? So why don't, why don't we just think about it um? And and then we can, once Kate does something, we can even. I don't know what we'll do, but.
The time to do, you know, I I'm not talking about like every candidate for every position ever, I'm just talking about Oakmont for council, just putting names with faces.
I think it's a, it's a um, it's a general issue, it's 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 bigger than just this this election and.
Sure, absolutely.
Candidates, you know, I think we have to be sure. For some reason, my initial gut reaction is. Uh you know, uh just kind of gives me a pause, so.
The the purpose of the meeting is to fill a vacancy.
Right.
Now, if people that are running for office. Decide to apply for the vacancy, then they would have their opportunity to make their pitch, my. My thought is that if they're not looking to fill that vacancy, that that's not the purpose of that meeting to to hear from other people.
I'm not saying on the May eighth one, I'm saying. On the second, like if we have a public comment anyway, where there's opportunities for people to come up and introduce ourselves. Uh and introduce themselves and ask questions of the borough anyway. These are people that are saying, I'm interested in joining this and in serving the community, so to say. I'm so and so and I'm on the ballot, if it's inviting everyone.
You're using borough resources for a political advertisement, how can that possibly be legal?
Okay, without you yelling at me, take a back step.
I'm yelling at the concept, how can that?
There doesn't need to be yelling and Kate said she'd look into it.
Without finding him, I think we have, and then thinking about it and maybe there's another way in a non-meeting setting. Um either either us or uh another entity in borough that they that uses Zoom, because there are other entities in the borough. Um that have meetings in museums like R A W. And our Junior Rooms Club used to have something where candidates were interviewed. And that was just, that was just a volunteer organization that chose to spend one meeting doing that. That's been a number of years since that was done, but.
Yeah.
Possibly someplace like.
Something that is not supported by taxpayer dollars.
So that's, I think we need to to table this and look into it. And um and then see what we what we can learn. Cause we can't answer it until we know what's.
Sure.
What's right, so. And anything else, Amin?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, um we have to go back into the two motions. And who would like to state with this? This is the. Okay, so we'd like to have a motion to add a uh. A discussion and um of the. Dark Hollow Woods Master Plan uh contracted.
I'll make a motion to add the discussion to Dark Hollow Woods Master Plan Contracted to the agenda.
And that would be under Public Works Items F three. Um is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Tracy holds seconds, any more discussion about that? No, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, okay, now, um the second motion would be. And let me just back up, was there something else that you mentioned that we?
We're gonna do public comment after that, so we have.
Public comment at this point or after um?
After it.
After we do the motion?
You know, I would, I would just do public comment now.
Okay.
Because typically when you have public comment, it's just because people can kind of see. We can see that it's on the agenda.
Alright, good, so then we will take public comment at this time with respect to the Dark Hollow Woods Master Plan Contract. Is there anyone who'd like to speak, can you, you have to stand up and go on board.
Quick question, I was wondering if Western Pennsylvania Conservancy offers any help to.
They do, and they're, and they have helped us already. We also have our, our tree um commission is headed by a young man. Whose career is in forestry and and conservation.
I'd like to compliment you on that, they totally beat out of California Avenue and within weeks they were replaced.
Yeah. Yeah, he does a very good job, so he has some expertise right here in borough. Actually, we have a couple of other people too who who are are quite knowledgeable and um but um. They they have shown an interest in being involved, so it's great.
Alright, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have a question or comment? Alright, so now we'll take a motion to engage um environmental protector. Yeah, environmental planning and design, that's what it is. Um uh take a motion to accept their bid. For forty five, for not to exceed forty five thousand dollars for the preparation of the Dark Hollow Woods Master Plan.
I'd like to motion to engage E P D in the preparation of a master plan for Dark Hollow Woods. Not to exceed a budget of forty five thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Say frankly seconds, anybody want to make further discussion on this? No, okay, good, um on favor, aye. Thank you all very much, sorry for kind of running around the circle and also um we can make any comments from the public about any general matter at this time. Come forward, state your name and your address.
Jen Paris, two twenty six Washington Avenue, I just had a question about the um parking stations. Are there gonna be, and I may have missed it, are there gonna be signs saying for electric cars only, because right now. People are just getting there.
That's that's part of the process, the ordinance.
Okay.
Uh the signs, the signs may never come in, but the signs will be there for E V parking only. And we're also required to paint the asphalt different color via green color and have logos on the floor as well. So that's that's part of the process.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. Okay, um. Good. Mr. Duncan made a motion to move during the meeting to the second second. Eight one four, uh eight forty five, the second? And maybe Leonardo seconded and the meeting is a different one, eight forty five. Thank you all for coming, um we appreciate your interest.